Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to the Brandon Select Board. I'll call the board to order. It's January 13th. First item is to adopt the agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion. Is there a second?
All right, we'll second that.
Could we add an executive session at the very end for the appointment or employment revaluation of a public officer or employee? Is there any objection? So, following number 10, but before adjournment, we'll have, I expect, a brief executive session. Any other additions or alterations to make? If not, all in favor of the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item two, approval of the select board minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Oh, sure. Move to approve both minutes. Is there a second?
One second.
Any errors or omissions in the minutes as they're submitted?
Well, and these are the, oh, three minutes, right?
December 23rd, January 7th.
And then the January 13th, um, I think there was another, um...
I don't have minutes for January 13th today.
No, you're right, 7th through 23rd.
Ah, 13th is today.
Yes, no, no, I was thinking that we had two budget minutes. So, that was why we, um...
So, December 23rd, January 7th.
Yes.
Any errors or omissions? If not, all in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Wyman. Item three, the town manager's report. Mr. Atherton.
It's going to be released on December 30th and January 6th. Um, segment six, handovers are currently being installed at various locations downtown. This will be ongoing for the next couple of weeks. Um, we're meeting with Cassell and DuBois to came to go over the bridge slab plans. Um, we're anticipating a start date in March and completion by June 30th on the slab out there. Uh, Park Street surveyors from Markowski Exhibiting have been on site to confirm elevations, and we're looking at a tentative start date of October 1st and completion is 180 days, I'm sorry, April 1st. Completion 100, around 180 days, so sometime in October. Um, other things going on, we've pulled the current tax sale for county terrace mobile homes, um, under new ownership. The park owner has actually gotten rid of quite a few of the tenants in there, so we'll be discussing delinquencies a little further in a while. Completed employee evaluations, worked on the budget, refreshing the town report, it's been quite a, quite a lot of my time has been spent on that lately. One other thing I wanted to add that I got from our rental housing officer, Mr. Pilbeck, this evening was that, um, he has, uh, I'll read it to you. Uh, the 2020 annual statement of compliance for rental housing in Brandon was sent out over the past weekend. Letters and self-inspection forms were sent to 150 property owners for the 470 rental housing units in town. In addition, 25 of these also received a delinquent notice for their 2019 filing. So, Tom was a little ahead of the game on that, which is good. Uh, REC news, uh, winners off to a hot start for Brandon REC. We're in the midst of changing over registration software and are traveling back in time to 2016 when we last had to process paper registrations. Our new system is slated to be operational first week in February in time for ski and indoor soccer. Uh, our town hall programming begins tonight. We table tennis upstairs from 7:00 to 9:00, it's a pre-offering. Uh, indoor cornhole starts on the 15th of January and will run 7:00 to 9:00. This year's format is different, and then you can show up as a single. Um, Commissioner Melanie Gee will be having folks blind drop her partners each night. Uh, Brandon Idol 2020 opening concert will be held on Saturday, January 18th at 7:00. Tickets are $5 at the door. Fan favorite, new judges, new talent, same prize. First concert is singer's choice. Judges will determine the folks that move on to subsequent live band and theme concerts in February, March, April, and May. The finals are held at the Brandon Carnival. These are talented folks. There are talented folks registered, and it's great to afford a white spent cold night. And January 25th, the town hall will be hosting a moonlighting in Vermont, an evening of show tunes and jazz standards with Kristen Carr, Jess Frostman. Star was with some featured guest singing show tunes with piano accompaniment. Tickets are available at 8026.
Thank you, Mr. Atherton. Questions for the town manager from the board? No, I have none. Mr. Bailey?
Um, I just had someone ask me today about, um, Park Street. So, it's interesting what they were wondering if we were going to have any, uh, Park Street meeting, kind of like they had segment six meetings, that we're going to do anything to inform the public about what, what to expect for delays? Is there not too many delays? I said I didn't think there were going to be too many delays here because the meeting would get on the sides and...
Well, um, I mean, it's no different than what we're going to do on Union Street, I guess, so if, if the park folks want to have a meeting, I guess we can, but...
I just wanted to add, say, uh...
We'll definitely be discussing it here every couple of weeks, so, I mean, anyone can call me anytime. Go around and certainly get together on that. We'll see, I guess. Maybe, maybe we could, um...
But something you see every day, so I think...
It's nuts.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Thank you.
No, that's all right.
Mr. Wyman? Questions for the town manager from the public? Any questions for Mr. Atherton? Okay, if not, thank you, Mr. Atherton. We'll move along to public comment and participation. So, it'd be for items that you do not see up for discussion later on the agenda. And we'll start with the board. Mr. Wyman?
Morning.
Mr. Bailey?
No. Good to hear.
Mr. Bailey? No. Anyone in the public in attendance tonight have anything that they'd like to raise to the board's attention? Mr. Bailey?
I'd like to start the year by thanking you all for your service. I know you're really not, I know you're really not compensated for all the time and energy you've asked for the benefit of the town, and I appreciate that. And I think the board has a unique skill set to address the town's situations, so, thank you all.
Charlie, have you recorded all of the... Representative Jerome?
So, I, um, just wanted to, uh, let you know that, as you all know, session's off to a wild start already. And, uh, if you, I just want to make sure that everyone knows that they can contact me if they have any concerns or comments or questions about bills. Uh, you can reach me on my Facebook page, or my email, or my cellphone, um, or even the State House phone, and I'm happy to get back to, to anyone. I'm, I'm serving again on the Committee on Economic Development, and as I hear of things, I'll keep, I'll keep, I don't know, posted and up to date on, on issues that I think that the town needs to be aware of. And, oh, this Saturday, I'll be having my first meeting at the library. We'll start around 10:30. I hope, have it for an hour, um, and then I head over to the women's, um, march at Cassidy and afterwards. So, thank you, and please keep me in mind if you have any concerns.
Thank you. Other members of the public with comment tonight? Other public participation? Okay. By a crowd of not, we'll move along. Item five is a revolving loan fund item, so I'll ask Mr. Moore to present.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to read a letter that the select board received as a part of their packet. Uh, on January 3rd, the Brandon revolving loan fund committee met to consider a loan request from Pat and Dan Foley for their new business venture, Foley Taco and Bean. The Foley brothers and their brewery success is a story with which the board is intimately familiar, as the brothers were able to get a start using RLF monies. They paid their loan off early while creating a Brandon-based business with international notoriety. The new venture represents a robust plan to roast and serve their own coffee, serve takeout tacos, showcase a plethora of microbrewers from around the state, in addition to maintaining the legacy of a Wilcox ice cream stand located in the heart of our downtown in the former Ice Cove space. The community members present voted unanimously to approve a partial funding of their request, as they did not want to lend out the entirety of the fund balance to one borrower. The amount to be loaned is $30,000. This represents about 30% of the startup investment. The terms would be a 3% interest rate at amortized and an 84-month loan with a balloon payment at 48, secured by first security interest in all business assets of Foley Taco and Bean. I'll forego, all the listing includes the espresso machine. As is customary with all RLF loans, personal loan guarantees will be signed by all the principals of the corporation. The Foley brothers have proven to be adept entrepreneurs. Their expansion of their successful brand and the creative reinvigoration of a legacy business to create another destination spot in Brandon demonstrates that leveraging our RLF program with our unique town yields successful results. And Pat, Dan, and special guest, Matt Foley, here, to answer any questions you guys might have with consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. Any questions from the board for any of the folks who were here tonight?
I read it was good. Very good presentation. Mr. Moore for getting into us in advance was something I really enjoyed. It was great, very easy to understand. Glad you're in our town.
Congratulations on the new venture.
Thank you.
Uh, what's the pleasure of the board on the approval of the revolving loan fund?
Yeah, I vote that we approve it once.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Say aye. Any opposed, say no. Guys, have it. I do want to disclose that I have a business relationship with a family member. It's well-known. Thank you very much. Item six, tax equalization study results. Mr. Atherton?
So, we get this every year from Department of Taxes. It just shows what our common level of appraisal on our composition of dispersion is, which those numbers actually trigger whether or not we need a reappraisal. We started one two years ago, even though our numbers this year look pretty good, so, um, we're 98.77% CLA and 13.49% on dispersion, and, um, the bottom number needs to go over 20% just before we do one, so...
So, we're in the midst of the reevaluation anyway?
Right.
And, uh, there was a correction issued, right, today?
Right, yeah.
Correction to the top number in the box is there. They left off 2-0?
On the rhyme.
Doesn't matter. So, this is for the board's information. Is there any questions about them?
Um, what is the typical trigger point for the, um, common level of appraisal? You told me the dispersion, but I'm curious to know what the trigger point is for...
So, actually, on the back page of that, it told you that it has to go, um, for the common level below 85 or over 15.
There it is.
Yeah. So, if it hadn't had a bad thing, that it was started, I mean, you know, we've heard about it for years and it didn't be done, but, um, I think with all of our market changes and everything, and, you know, currently, we only have 14 houses listed on MLS in town right now. There's 18 in tour and their contract, we were just looking at it last week, so, you know, we're, um, cool thing to happen with that, so, it'd be good to see how our market really is.
I think even here regardless of these numbers, it's always important to have a reappraisal, because it just gets everything back on an even basis. And when we have some buildings that are under tax sales or different things, our evaluations do get changed up. And a reappraisal gets everyone on the same page. I clearly think it's a great, great thing. I'm glad we're doing it.
When do you, as kind of a related question, when do the, do you anticipate the reappraisal process will be at the point where they publish the book and so forth?
We're still at another year, at least on that. Yeah, I mean, they still have to do, um, all the grievances and everything, so it's going to take a while. It's at least a year.
Any questions from the public about the tax study? If something comes from the state. Okay. Item seven, Rutland Regional Planning Commission has a public works emergency mutual aid agreement for us tonight.
So, this is something that's been talked about for a while with the planning commission folks, and, um, every year when we do the emergency man, or one I do emergency man and plan, with mutual aid for, well, most emergencies, if, you know, we have a town, let's use Goshen, for example, that's limited on resources, that we can, well, Goshen's actually backed its Addison County, it's still helping, but, um, you know, we can, such a, there's a list created within Rutland County of who has what on the back of this equipment.
That is a cool inventory.
So, yeah, you know, we try to do it every year and update it over here. If someone's in need of, you know, a dewatering water pump or something, like we've seen on some of the segment six project, and the town's got money to use, um, it's, I think it's a good thing to have, you know. We've all been subject to certain disasters at different times, so, um, it's good to help the neighbors out.
So, have we not in the past had this? Is this a new thing?
It wasn't as detailed as this last time, so this is really, you know, this is kind of fine-tuned, which is good. We've got a short one that's in the management plan that's been there for a while, just with, it's kind of like surrounding towns, not like the whole county, so...
I think this is a sensible way to share resources in the event of an emergency, and we, we know we've had some flooding emergencies, we've had some other emergencies, so this is kind of like what the fire departments do and so forth, but we're talking about public works equipment.
Exactly.
What's the pleasure of the board? I move that we enter into the Rutland Regional Planning Commission an emergency mutual aid agreement for public works as presented.
That's right.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of entering into the mutual aid agreement for public works emergencies, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Ayes have it. Item eight, stormwater mitigation grant.
So, this is a grant that I applied for late fall, the Lake Shamplin Basin Program. It's a 100% funded grant for engineering and construction. Um, this is, this was based off of the stormwater master plan that we did a few years back, that identified some of our prone stormwater areas where, you know, things were running in the river, like Park Street with this rain guarantee going on. Uh, so, we actually picked two other projects out of that, one being the parking lot behind Cafe Provence that touches the Neshi River and actually slopes down that way. And Pearl Street was the other one, similar runoff issues like, uh, Park Street. So, like I said, this is 100% funded. We have no match. Uh, it's $74,000 and change. They're looking at, there's actually a timetable in here, looking at having things done by November 2021, so, um... Yeah, we got the award, so that's 100%.
Good job, Dave. So, that's two hydrologically connected parcels that, um, were identified, that we're going to be able to take some attention to without local match. Great job. Item nine is, yes, Mr. Jeff Stewart?
Yeah, I've got a query in the previous issue.
Yes.
I looked at it, and I see that there are two things that are being put into the parking lots. And the parking lot is a public parking lot, so it's a parking lot. Uh, but Chef Robert has expressed concerns that his patrons are losing space. Is either of these things going to take away from the rather limited parking that's there?
Shouldn't. It's going to be right on the end by the river.
That's fine, but it's talking about another one, putting in a dry well or something.
Well, that would be in the ground. It would be...
So, it's not going to affect Park? Okay, thank you.
And we do have a brand new parking area right down here.
I know.
Should be paved here, hopefully by the end of summer if things go right, so...
That answers it, thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. So, the budget for next year, the, uh, select board has met with the budget committee five times, and with the town manager and various department heads, and at the budget committee meeting of January 7th, right? That was the last one we had. I think we, uh, came out with a document that had consensus support from both the budget committee and the select board. Mr. Atherton, do you have the, uh, final figure so we can discuss that correctly?
Would you like this?
Yeah. Sure. That's a matter to... Okay, so, um, at the last workshop, the bottom line for municipal operating budget expenditures was $3,266,303. The amount to be raised by taxes would be $2,718,353, which represents an increase of $65,798 from the prior year, or 2.48%. What's the pleasure of the board in terms of this budget?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget from the numbers that you just gave, so we can go into discussion.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Did you have discussion? No. Again, thank the members of the budget committee, Tony Petruro, Jane Coolidge, uh, who else did we have this year? Cindy Val, Mary Berry, right, we had four this year. Discussion from the board? Further discussion? If not, all in favor of submitting the budget with the numbers that I stated a moment ago to the voters at the town meeting day, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Any dissensions? So, the ayes have it, that was five to nothing. And then the other items that were talked about at the budget meetings, uh, the workshops, were some articles, one or more articles for public works related. Mr. Atherton, did you want to have an update to the board regarding the equipment article?
Sure. Yeah, we can update all three from now.
Sure, please do.
You know, we had a bunch of discussion about, first originally tossed around some sidewalk money as an appropriation of excavator and paving, to have additional paving on, um, outside of our budget. And, um, after talking with Sean, our highway foreman, the thought was that we really didn't need to spend the funds on an excavator this year, that we, as we needed, we could lease one, like G Stone Commercial or whatever. The sidewalks, it was something that I was hoping to put in the budget this year, but I think after some discussion and where we see where segment six is going to fall, and Union Street, we're getting sidewalk and Park Street, that the sidewalk would be a really good thing to use our option tax funds for, because it is a capital project. So, I'm, I think we're okay with not funding sidewalk this year in our budget, because we have so many other things left to finish up that probably may not have time to spend. As far as paving, though, Sean and I had, Sean had come up with a great list of, you know, the prone areas of where we'd like to do, at least shim and overlay. And there were seven spots, and three of them we really thought we'd like to see get done this year, only because of the way that the state's paved and with Park Street and stuff done. Park Street Extension was one that we'd like to shim and overlay. The paved portion of Country Club Road, so from Park Street Extension, Route 73, and Corona Street, because it's the road to the transfer station. Those total about $144,000. So, we have in our 50 in the budget, and would like, I'd like to request that we do $100,000 paving appropriation to cover that, rest of that, and then that's three more streets that we have off of our paving inventory that needs to be done for a while, so... And the shim and overlay at this point with those roads, it will, it will give them a little more integrity than letting them go any farther and getting, becoming in more shape, you know, you know. And then we can look at, you know, when we're done, these other projects we've got pending now, rebuilding Town Farm Road, because that needs a complete rebuild. Pearl Street all the way to Sanderson Bridge, and actually a little after that, still a Class II. That, we can apply for a Class II grant money for that, so, um, that's something we can look at down the road, too.
So, we had some Class II grant money this season, which means next season we wouldn't be eligible? Is that generally how it goes?
Um, usually, it depends on where we sit. It's a percentage thing on what we spend for highway funds and, um, yeah, but I, we'll be eligible for a different amount in a couple of more years.
So, it's generally been not, not an annual big amount for a Class II grant, right?
The last thing, well, it's $175,000. It's pretty much what it is. Um, we did Union Street with it. I would like to apply for the structure side of that for this year Sean and I were talking about, so we could take a look at that, I don't know, district box cover that is in bad shape, you know, we could get a grant, a structured grant for that, so...
We were looking at, um, with the budget committee, we had, you know, tossed around a number and so forth for the paving appropriation. And then when you identify the projects, and I was looking in the past several years what we had asked for, I find that it looks to me like the years that we get the Class II grants, we have been getting by the $50,000 article, but then the alternate year, we've had $100,000 article. So, last year, we asked for a $50,000 paving article. The previous year was $100,000. The previous year was $50,000. The previous year was $100,250. So, I don't think $100,000 paving article is out of, you know, our normal pattern. It seems like we, we kind of cover one year and then expect to get some money to help us with the second year.
And it'd be nice to get caught up.
And it's been productive using it.
Yeah, we're getting close to getting caught up, so...
I'd like to understand what you, um, what you said about the sidewalk for a moment, because in the budget meetings, we talked about putting in an appropriation so the townspeople could decide whether they wanted to fund that. And I wasn't sure if you said that we have option money that would fund the sidewalks, so we didn't need to fund it through an appropriation?
Well, we wouldn't have, I mean, we could, we're kind of sitting on that option until the 1%, until we settle up the books with segment six, which is, you know, probably a wise decision on all of our parts. But sidewalk at some point would be nice to throw back in the budget, and I, you know, looking at next year, or, you know, not next year, the year after, you know, we won't have interest to pay on segment six. There'll be some other things that'll come out of our, our budget at that point, where I think would be a nice time to throw maybe some funds for match money for sidewalks if we decide to do like what we've done on Union Street. But the, the option, the 1% would cover that cost of sidewalks going forward. That's what it's sort of set up for. And I just don't think, after looking at it, you know, we had a lot of discussion on our budget meetings, I don't know if we had time to do extra sidewalk this year with wrapping up everything else, so... Okay? And I, you know, I look at like Union Street absolutely needs new sidewalks, there's no doubt, from, from Hanaford down to the railroad tracks. That's not going to be a shim and overlay. That's going to be a dig it all up and rebase it, redo it, because it's in horrible shape. So, that's, it's going to cost some money to do it, so I think we should look at using leverage on some other funds to get that, huh?
So, what's the pleasure of the board regarding any articles for town meeting, and articles to put before the voters this year?
I make a motion that we have one article for paving, for $100,000, paving, um, Park Street Extension, Country Club Road, and Corona Street, and, uh, where we will be spending the money be spending the money with any extra being used for whatever needs come up at that point.
Yeah, important to include that, right? So we don't get, yeah, stuck with some money that's not appropriated.
I like the idea of going back to putting names of the streets in the warning, so that people know what they're voting for and where we're spending it. And then when it's done, they can see that we did what we said.
So that's a motion.
That's a motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, and discussion?
At some point in time, I would like to see the asphalt, as you were just talking about the sidewalks, put back into the budget. I don't know if that's something that's feasible down the road.
I think it will be down the road, right?
I, I understand that we need this, but I just, I feel as though that we need to look at sliding the asphalt back into the budget.
Like we said at the budget meeting, it's up to the Budget Committee and the, well, actually the Select Board overall to decide how we want to fund that within the budget. Again, I still say when we are done with these projects and we see where our 1% is falling, and it's gone up the last three, three quarters, we'll have more funds there to do what it says, capital projects, capital improvements. They would fund, you know, highway garages and sidewalks, whatever, you know, if you repair some buildings, that's exactly what that money is there for. We can use it on that. So I, I think if, I think we'd be okay, especially if we can use that to leverage grant funds to do more, more sidewalk and roadway there.
Further discussion?
I agree with Mr. Wyman. I'd like to see it in the budget, you know, within the near future. I think it's better just put in there, not appropriation, but for this year, I'd deal with it.
I think that's been a, it's been a discussion, as you know, that we've had with the Budget Committee amongst ourselves for a number of seasons now. And it's, it's been, it's been a desire. I think it's a, it's, it's a goal that's possible within the near term because of what Mr. Atherton's talked about in terms of other obligations being taken care of. No segment six, short-term interests and so forth, no, no other, no other hands looking for the 1% money, that kind of thing. But for this year, I think it's part of our, it's part of the existing pattern in terms of working with the class two funding and doing the 50, doing the 100, doing the 50, doing the 100. Further discussion?
The only other thing is, if there was any of that money left over, would it be feasible? Or should we put it in? Is there any sidewalks that we need? I'm, I'm going to just throw this out there, like Pearl Street.
So we could do it.
With, I mean, with this excess, with?
Yeah, because we, you know, we, the language in our appropriation is listing out those three projects that we just talked about. And to, I believe the way we worded it last year or the year before was, and other paving projects as needed or something like that.
Right, so I mean, a sidewalk, a paved sidewalk could be a?
That's what we did three years ago, when we did, like the set side of Park Street. Remember, we did the sidewalk paving there and we did a bunch of paving up by?
For evidence, we did 12 small streets.
Right. But we had a bunch, no, I think it was the year after, so we had a bunch of sidewalks.
There was something, we had a bunch of, so we were able to, we were able to do some of the sidewalk.
Yeah, we could do that.
I agree totally in the principle as to what Tracy and Brian were saying. We really wanted to work that out of the budget. We did put those in years back when the town wasn't getting budgets passed. And it's always hard to say, when is the time when we stop doing that and we throw that back in? And when, when does that happen? And what are we forsaking if we do that? You know, in a 2.4% budget, if we left it at 50 in the appropriation and increased the budget line from 50 to 100, instead of having a 2.4%, I think we would have a three, four, 4% increase. And I don't know if that goes. And if we go all of it in there, we're up to, you know, almost five and a half, 6% budget increase. And I just think that that's really tough because people are going to have a hard time passing it up. So even though I agree in principle, I worry that it will sink our budget.
Well, I mean, I understand why we put it here and point it down, but.
Yeah. And I would love to see us not.
I'd love to see it getting down towards the 50 or 100.
Because I would like to see the weaning process. And we had always planned on when the 1% money came in, that that was when we felt we could stop having an appropriation, you know. And so we are a year away from that. I don't know, it would, it would be interesting. And we may always need some appropriations. If, if Dave can land something that's a match, if we have X number of dollars, you know, will people go with it?
It seems like.
No, it's going to be twice as much money.
It seems like the discussion that came out of the budget meeting was that appropriations should be exceptional spending, where things that are, you know, needed for the town should be included in our budget.
You know, and it all gets paid in the first statute bill, and it, it all comes out of that pot in the end, but it's how people feel about it. And it does give, I think almost everybody in our Budget Committee said they liked the appropriations, when they walk in, they read where it's going to go and what they're doing. And, and I know we've had a lot of, we've had much better success, higher voter positive support on an appropriation than we've had on the budget every single time we've done it.
Well, I, I think one thing to look at too is from, you know, looking at six and seven years ago, when we weren't really spending anywhere on the roads. And that, all the roads continued to do is, they deteriorated every year, you know. And we got to the point of where doing a mile of paving a year was just not cutting. You know, we, we lost some road, you know, with the rebuild on Union Street there five years ago. But, and we've inherited this pile of projects that needed to either get done or we had to pay back. So we're almost, we're kind of around the corner on these projects now and starting to see the other side. And I think that at that time, it might make sense to do that, you know, put it back in the budget. But also too, that like I said, if we're continuing to grow our 1% option, that's just money to leverage for money all the time. And I think we've got a pretty good track record of doing that, using those folks' money right now, so.
Another interesting thing, when we started doing it that way, we really thought we were going to get a lot of people who were going to say, oh, you know, we're doing this road, this road, this road. People are going to come in and say, well, that's not my road, you know, so I'm going to vote no. But we didn't have that happen. We still saw people looking at, you know, we drive up North Street, you know, let's get that paved. And we drive from this road and it was, it was really positive experience. So I, you know, it's, it's a tough one.
And we've done a pretty good job of spreading it around too.
Yes, we have.
You know, North Street and Steinberg Road. You know, it's, it's kind of touching everything, so.
Any questions? All in favor of a $100,000 article for the three roads and any additional projects that the money may allow for paving, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Any extensions? The ayes have it. The warrants. What's the pleasure of the board on the first warrant for the general fund?
I'm going to approve the first warrant.
Mr. Coolidge moves to approve.
Sorry.
Mr. Wyman, second. Maybe Mr. Wyman second one.
I'm fine now.
You're fine now?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions on any of the bills?
Question, comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right.
Yeah.
Not quite enough. No, sorry.
You got a second from our.
Wrong, wrong.
I'll second if I can answer the first question.
I try.
Yeah, you did.
Go ahead. You seconded and?
I seconded. My own question, or it's a question and an observation, is on the page four of the sixth part, way down is Markowski excavation for $24,000. And that's on the Union Street sidewalk project. It shows how much the sidewalk, I mean, I know we did some.
That's, that's a rain engine somewhere.
Rain engine, whatever, but still, a little bit of sidewalk. So taking $20,000 out of sidewalk is such a drop in, you know, in the budget. You really got to look for more grants on sidewalk. So I was, hey, trying to find out if that is the correct figure? And is that totally paid for that whole project?
No, they've still got more sidewalk there. So they stopped foreign sidewalk, well, I think the last invoice was in November or something like that, when things get, because the temperature was not.
Okay, so there is still more coming on that project?
They aborted, it started popping once it froze, so.
Okay.
Other questions? All in favor of approving the warrant as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Any extensions?
Aye.
Mr. Wyman, second. Item B, the Route 7 warrant.
I'll make a motion to approve the Route 7 warrant, $85,863.49. I can second this one.
Mr. Bailey moves, and Mr. Wyman secondes. Any questions or discussion?
It should be the last one for a while of this size.
And did you get a chance to look at the consolidating voices to see their offer?
No. And many questions on this one?
You got them all answered, sent us back?
We did, yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. All in favor of the Route 7 construction warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Any extensions? The ayes have it. At this time, the Select Board will recess. We will convene as the Board of Liquor Control Commissioners, then we will convene as the Board of Sewer Commissioners, and then the Select Board will have an executive session. Thank you.